Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting for March 26, 2018. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, by the liberty and justice for all. Looks like Pastor Lowell has not made it this evening, so we'll move on to item number three on the agenda. Roll call vote, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Modery.
Here.
This item will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the back of the room here. Item number five, Approval of Agenda: Consent Agenda and Advisory Committee Reports.
So item 5A is Approval of the Agenda. 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Item 5B1, Approval of the Minutes from the March 12, 2018 City Council Meeting and the March 12, 2018 Board of Equalization Meeting. Item 5B is the Complete Streets Annual Report. 5B3 is Approval of the Deed of Reconvenance on 7515 Ira Circle. Item 5B4, Custom Farming Contracts. 5B41, Approval of the Eighth Extension to the Custom Farming Contract with Justin Toms for approximately 61 acres at 36th Street and Cape Heart Road. Item 5B42, Approval of the Eighth Extension of the Custom Farming Contract with Justin Toms for the approximately 62 acres at the Bellevue Sports Complex at Cunningham Road and west of Hartland Lewis Road. Item 5B5, Approval of the Retail Sales Agreement for the annual maintenance of the AV equipment at the fire training site through AVI in the amount of $5,200. Mayor, Council Members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Mr. Hanson.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. At the request for merge. 12A and 12B. 12A and 12B.
Yeah.
We need to get a motion to approve the agenda.
That's what I was gonna ask. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda first?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda second.
A motion in a second. Discussion questions? See none?
No.
Was that for the consent or was that?
Oops. No, I'd like to go ahead and remove item 12A of the tonight's agenda from our turn. Buckley, I need a second.
Mr. Buckley.
I'll second.
Yes, I had spoken with Mike Christensen on both of these items earlier today and also on one item, the owners. The owner had hired an attorney who called me late last week and he was out of the country at the time and he didn't feel he could be prepared in time for tonight's meeting, so he asked that we postpone that so we can see if we can work through issues. So, that is one. And then the other matter, the notice that was sent for this meeting to the property owner, Mike said, had come back to Sabrina as undelivered.
Unclaimed.
And so, I'm sorry?
Unclaimed.
Unclaimed, excuse me.
Due to vacant, but they were, they were sent as both, or as both registered and regular.
Okay. So, Mike was wanting to see if we could try again on service on that as opposed to having the hearing tonight, so that's why we've asked to have these two matters pulled.
So they will be continued to the next meeting?
Yes, we can do that. Make that your motion, John.
We'll go ahead and move it to our next meeting, if that's okay. On a motion. Second.
On the original motion, was the second by Mr. Shannon or Mr. Cook? Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought.
So we had a motion in a second. Any discussion? See none, vote please.
I'm the holdup. I'm not getting the screen.
Are you following?
I'm trying.
Where's Phil?
All voted yes.
Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon.
I have a second amendment to the agenda. I would move that items 9A and 9A1 be moved to item 11A and 11A1. We have just gone through a considerable rewrite of the cemetery rules, and I would like this to come out on first reading and not third reading, so that next meeting, the public will have had some time to look at these new rules and we can have a public hearing on the new cemetery rules and get input on how we did in our rewrite from the public before we just implement these. So, that's what I'm asking for, is that we move the cemetery rules from 9A and 9A1 to 11A and 11A1.
Mr. Buckley.
I don't think it'd be appropriate to move it to first reading because this ordinance has already had first and second reading. It's on for third reading now. If you want to postpone the third reading or make a motion to open it to public input at this meeting, you can do that, but there, it can't be moved back to first reading. It's already had first and second reading.
Jim, would it, would it be possible to continue these items, to continue the third reading with opening for public testimony at that third reading?
Yes, that's, yes.
Would that be a better motion?
That, that would be fine.
All right. Then I will motion that we continue this till next meeting and schedule a public hearing at the same time to allow the public to make input before we approve them. Second.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to oppose the motion. I think this has had its first reading, its second reading, it's been discussed for over a year. We have extended it for not just the three months that was requested. We actually went from last November until now, which is four months. We've had two meetings. We've got a whole dossier here of things that have been happening. All of these things are subject to change and to being done with amendments. We, I think, are not doing the public a service by having no rules in place, by not having anything complete. This will be monitored and we can change it anytime that we want to. It just doesn't make sense to keep delaying, 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 delaying. And this, trying to go back to first reading and start over, would be appropriate if there were major modifications. But virtually all of the rules that are in it were original rules with a few changes. I had asked for two things. One was to eliminate vigil lights, which I think cause a hazard, but staff said they don't think they are. So if they can live with that, I can live with it. I asked that we have a noise ordinance. Staff said it's not that noisy. People don't come in with boom boxes and all kinds of things, but at times we do have noise. They can live with it. So I can live with that. There's virtually nothing in here that needs another public hearing, although I will support opening it tonight if somebody wants to speak. This is long overdue. We keep taking staff time when staff have lots of other things they should be working on besides over and over and over again and having to keep coming to meetings. So, I think we've already more than overextended ourselves to make this available. I am going to vote against the motion to even delay this till the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with Mr. Preister. We've had two public hearings on this. We listened to what people said. The three of us, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Shannon, and myself, have met with staff. At one of the meetings, there was a, Mr. Holly was there who, who has been on this cemetery committee for many years. So we listened to what the public said. I'm not getting everything I want in this, in this policy. I'd like to, but I agree with Mr. Preister. It's a matter of give and take. It's doable. We can make it work and we can always bring it back if we want to make any changes. I think we need to take a vote and move on.
So where are we?
So, the, the original motion was to move the item to, I believe it was 11, and then Mr. Shannon amended his motion to delay the item to the next meeting with a public hearing. So, if the council's ready to vote, they can move to delay it. If the, if, if the vote does not hold up, then it will still remain where it is on third reading for approval.
Just a final comment.
Mr. Shannon.
Yeah, we, we have significant members of the press and members of the public that want to comment on the new rules, and so I think we owe them that. We have rules in place right now. Those, those are the same rules that have been, been ignored for the last year and a half. We can hold on two more weeks just to get this right, to give everybody a chance to have their say. I don't want this to be the second council meeting in a row where we're denying the public the right to come up and speak. Free speech doesn't need to be attacked this way. We need to just slow down, let the public tell us how we did on this rewrite. We made 40 or 50 changes in the rewrite, so let's let the public have a chance to read it, come tell us how we did, and then we can vote on it. Nobody in the cemetery's going anywhere.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I, it, what's on here tonight is a third reading. I would support public input tonight, but I'm not gonna, I, I don't think I can, I won't support continuing it for, to our next meeting.
All the people that want to comment aren't here. They weren't told to come.
We have a motion in a second.
So we have a motion in a second? Please vote. This vote is to delay, correct?
I'm still not getting.
Phil.
I clicked following, but.
I think, did you not do it in the, in the, when you just roll?
Yeah.
Phil's here.
Start over.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, why would I save it? Just do save action and make another motion. Why is it not moving? I see my screen won't move. No, see, I can't get to move up. There it goes, okay. Motion fails, two to four. Those voting no, John Hanson, Mr., Mr. Hanson, Mr. Cook, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Preister.
Sabrina, for the record, the first motion voted on was to remove items from the agenda. We have not yet voted on the agenda.
Correct.
And you guys have it in the record, voting on the agenda already. So we're about to take that vote right now.
No, we, we have that all down. I, you know, I'm, I'm keeping track and writing, but.
Yeah, what's in the computer?
To try and type it in while y'all are going is very difficult.
Okay.
So.
What the screen is showing is that the second amendment.
I understand, but, you know, I'm waiting, that's, yeah.
Now we need to approve the agenda.
We good? Please vote.
No. No. It hasn't, it hasn't been approved yet.
We're voting on the agenda.
As amended.
Which means taken off.
Your honor, it's a terrible agenda. That's what you want to be.
Yeah, I think she's gonna be able to give us the vote because she has that vote cleared.
Did it come up where they can vote? Was it up there that you could vote on the agenda?
No, it hasn't come up for any of us.
It's on there to vote for the agenda.
I'm not having one this time.
She's already.
Somehow it doesn't record. I don't.
Give it a moment.
We need something done with this.
The first one is the motion on the agenda by taking the table.
I think it's really.
Time and less pressure under.
Can you pop up? Do yours pop up, Don?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you have approved the agenda with the deletion of the two items. I jumped ahead and called the consent agenda. Would you like me to read the items again?
No.
Okay. So again, would the, if the mayor and council have no objections or any removal of any of the items from the consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda would be appropriate.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item six is Approval of Claims.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the claims.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none? Oh, Mr. Modery.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a point of clarification in, in the claims. There's an item under Recreation to the Lead Center that says men's league entry fee for $600. That was not really an entry fee. It was paying them for services they provided in support of the league, so.
Mr. Shannon.
Jim, I received an email on that, that item late this afternoon, and the city was reimbursing the Lead Center for use of the facility where the, the city used the facility and got tournament entry fees or something, so it was a valid expense.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Any other discussions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item seven is Special Presentations. Item 7A, Proclamation Designating April 2 through 8, 2018, as National Community Development Week.
Normally, we have Abby Highland here for the proclamation. She's not here this evening, but we'll go ahead and read the proclamation, so we have the proclamation ready to go for week of April 2nd through the 8th. Whereas the week of April 2nd through the 8th, 2018, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG. Whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas the CDBG program has assumed increasing importance as an instrument for meeting pressing community development needs in affordable housing, job creation, and retention, human services, capital improvements, and public infrastructure. And whereas, over the past five years, our community has received a total of $1,475,724 in CDBG funds to meet the needs of low and moderate income persons in our community. And whereas, the city of Bellevue would join the state of Nebraska, the city of Omaha, the city of Lincoln, and the city of Grand Island, as well as other communities, in celebrating Community Development Week in a ceremony on April 2nd. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Bellevue designates, designates the week of April 2nd, 2018 as National Community Development Week. Thank you.
Item 7B is the Annual Tree Board Report. Tree Board Member David Anson to present.
Welcome, Mr. Anson.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, other dignitaries, David Anson, 1001 Bellevue Boulevard South, a citizen and a member of the Tree Board. I will take it for granted that most of you have seen this report, if not read it entirely. I will just be hitting on a few things and doing a little summary. What about trees? What is the common good that they provide? Most of us realize that they provide shade and cooling for not only our personal self, but many of the buildings and our houses in the city. But also, the removal of pollutants is increasingly becoming more and more important. Ozon, carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, and small particulates are removed by the trees in our community. The more trees, the more pollutants are removed. Increasingly, carbon storage and sequestration is becoming even more of an issue for our trees because they have the ability to take carbon out of the environment and put it into the ground. They also reduce energy consumption for our major buildings and our houses. They also provide fruit, nuts, and other food sources, and of course, wood that has been made into other products. They also create a welcoming, pleasant, beautiful community. There are certain things in this report that I want to bring to your attention. The ash borer, Emerald Ash Borer is increasingly becoming a problem in our area. It has moved in, and we have seen evidence in Bellevue, although, as you see, 130 trees remain ash trees, and we've not recommended that any of them be taken down at this time. We did do an inventory this last fall of those trees and found that were, none of them were providing, were at a point that they could harm someone. I also want to bring to your attention the rain gardens, the importance of rain gardens. They're exceptionally benefit into removing and filtering the water from downstream. I also would encourage the council and the Public Works Department to think about our ditches and other waterways and try to make them more of a pollutant removal I also want to bring your attention to the Alanthus tree. It's oftentimes called the Tree of Heaven. Bellevue, for some reason, probably the early planting, this was considered the miracle tree in the 50s and was sold through comic books and other things. It was advertised to grow six to eight feet a year. Well, it has done that, and it's basically inundated much of our city, particularly the Old Town area. There are about seven areas of Old Town that have thousands of Alanthus trees. We undertook a project to try to kill off the Alanthus trees along Lincoln Road, just north of Harville. I don't know, we did that late summer, I think it was even early fall, and we won't know whether, how many of those trees were killed until I can make an inventory here in the spring. But Jewel Park, for one example, I've counted over 5,000 Alanthus trees in Jewel Park. That's probably two to three times more trees than the entire park. The Parks Department and the Public Works Department have undertaken to try to kill off some of those trees, but so far, we haven't been real successful with that. That's another project that looms in the future. I think we can encourage the city to improve our present assets before building others, and that's also true of trees. We need to take care of the trees that we have right now. We have planted a great many trees, but so far, we're running about 50% of our trees are actually making it to any kind of an adulthood for a tree. So that's not a perceptual good batting average, but it's one that we need to work on. In summary, these trees are your trees. They're our trees. They are a sizable investment of money and work. Keeping our tree's canopy healthy and vibrant will ensure our community maintains its health, wealth, vibrancy, appeal, and charm. Okay, if there's any question, I'll answer that, but I might tell you I'm not at our best, so don't ask me to treat.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anson? See none? Thank you for all your work on the Tree Board. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment that this is the ninth year for the Tree Board, and in those nine years, it's been all, an all-volunteer effort in collaboration with Public Works and the Parks Department, and a, a real asset to the city to have these members working regularly for, as volunteers, as so many good Bellevue residents do. They've contributed over $357,000 in grants and volunteer labor in that nine-year period of time. Planted over 1,000 trees in our city parks. Unfortunately, many of those were planted where there's poor soil, where in some cases, there have been deer and other things that have eliminated them. So, our batting average of 50%, well, that's 500 more trees than we had before, but we're gonna work on even more. So, thanks to the Tree Board and to all of their, and all the volunteer efforts that they organize.
Item 7C is a presentation and acceptance of the 2016-2017 Annual Audited Financial Statement. Amy Shrek with BKDCPAs and advisors presenting.
Welcome, Amy Shrek.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, thank you for taking time with us this afternoon or this evening to spend a little time on the audit results and audit procedures. My name is Amy Shrek. I'm an audit director with BKDCPAs and advisors out of our Omaha, Nebraska office. I have with me in the audience tonight Griffin Perry. He's a senior associate too with us, and he was in charge of overseeing all of the detail work that goes into an audit of the financial statements and compliance for the city of Bellevue. As we go through the results tonight, I, I feel like I need to kind of warn you just a little bit. I've been with the firm for so long. I love audits, and I get really excited about talking about audits, and I know not everyone is excited about talking about audits. So, bear with me as I maybe get a little bit more excited than you might be expecting for an audit report. But I do want to take you through a little bit of what we do in an audit, what we don't do, as well as give you the highlights of the results of the audit report that you have in your materials this evening. We conducted our audits in accordance with several sets of standards. First of all, we have the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. We also have the audits related to financial statement audits and government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. And finally, we have audits related, or the standards issued by the OMB and their compliance supplement related to the audits of compliance with the terms of federal grants. So we have a lot of standards that we keep in mind as we're working through our audit procedures. Even with all of those standards, an audit does not entail a detailed test of every transaction that is part of the city of Bellevue's financial statements. To conduct such an audit would be extremely costly, extremely time-consuming. It just can't be done in a reasonable fashion. So, instead, our audit procedures are designed to look for material misstatements of the financial statements, material non-compliance with any grants, contracts, laws, regulations, or any concerns related to the internal controls over financial reports. or any concerns related to the internal controls over financial reporting or over compliance. So in the results of our testing, we have several reports to talk through with you that you have in your materials. I'll give you the high-level findings that we found as a result of our audit procedures. If we have more questions, we can absolutely dive into those as we get going. But from a financial statement standpoint, we have issued what, or we're planning to issue, what we call an unmodified or a clean opinion. That means we feel the financial statements that you see here are fairly stated in all material respects, so have comfort that these financial statement numbers are materially correct. Our second type of report relates to the internal control structure of the City of Bellevue. When we look at the financial statements, we have to look at the controls around how those numbers are presented, how the disclosures are put together, management's processes for developing estimates, judgments, and the like. We have in this report, if there are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, those items are included as what we call a finding, and you'll see those. We had one item to communicate related to the City of Bellevue. As we looked through the process that the city goes through, during the year, they're operating on a cash basis, so we're paying attention to the budget, the receipts, the expenditures. And then when we get to the end of the year, to these financial statements that you see, there are adjustments that need to be made to GAAP financial statement basis. There are adjustments to the fund level financials as well as government-wide. The city's financial, Finance Department puts together the information that goes to make those entries. They make most of those entries themselves. They ask us for a little bit of assistance. We also have to look at, once they give us those entries, do we suggest changes to them? And that's where the significant deficiency that you see came into play this year. Some of the adjustments that were proposed, we as auditors made additional suggested adjustments that were recorded in the financial statements that you see here. Several of the areas where we've made adjustments to the city's adjustments in the past have improved, so we did not have to make as many suggestions. Some areas, we had to make a few more suggestions this year. So when we kind of compared all of the results, when we got to the end of the audit, we felt a significant deficiency was the level of control deficiency to communicate to you tonight. We also had some minor internal control deficiencies, so that would be the third level of deficiency that are not in writing in here. We didn't feel that those rose to the level of being so significant that we needed to put those in writing for you here this evening. Our final report relates to the work that we did to test the compliance with the federal grant expenditures. We had no instances of non-compliance, so there's an unmodified opinion on the compliance with federal grants in these reports. We also had no internal control findings related to those federal expenditures as well, so all clean results there. That was a very high-level discussion of what is in the audit report. There is a lot of work that goes behind that and a lot of work that goes into these financial statements. And I would like to take just a moment to say thank you to all of the city personnel that we work with, particularly Rich, Marcy, Scott, all of the members of the Finance Department. It's a significant effort. And to top it off, once that effort is complete, they get to answer all of our questions. And there's a lot of our questions. So they're very patient with us, we get the information we need, and we enjoy working with them. Are there any questions that I can answer for any of you this evening?
Mr. Shannon.
Yeah, I don't want to dive too far down into the weeds, but on page 58 of the report we received tonight.
Yes.
All right. There's a misstatement in there where you're talking about the cell phone tower revenues, and the contract for the cell phone tower revenue states that the city is to receive 50% of all increases in revenue after the contract was signed. So what you're stating in there is that you're looking for them to be giving 100% of the new revenue away, and that should not be.
We'll look at that.
Okay, so.
That's why, that's part of why this is in draft form, so that there are issues that we need to take a look at.
Yeah, that's just, that's a misstatement right there, okay? And then on page 57.
Okay.
Where you're talking about the Fire District, and I think it was the Eastern Sarpy Fire District, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You've been doing our audits for a number of years, so you're probably familiar with the fact that several years ago, the city had to write off $554,000 because this Fire District didn't pay us. Now all of a sudden their debt has risen back up to $387,000. I see this as a threat, possibly an unlawful act, because they earn their money by collecting tax money from their Fire District, and that tax money is being misappropriated and not paid to the City of Bellevue who's performing that service. So I see this as something that should be a significant finding in your audit report.
We, I believe we have tested this, and Rich can chime in if I'm incorrect, but I believe that amount was, has been collected since the end of the year, so I don't know that there would be a misstatement of the financial statements related to that dollar amount.
Have we collected it, Rich?
Yeah, Eastern Sarpy, they've paid us. Sometimes they're a little late in the payments, but there are not any amounts that are outstanding for more than a couple of months when they.
Okay, well, after writing off $554,000, I'm watching it.
What's that?
After writing off the $554,000, I'm watching these Fire Districts.
Okay, yeah, there's nothing that's, I'm not concerned at all about their payment for the services that we provide and the taxes that they put on their residents.
All right, thank you.
Now, back on the cell phone tower leases, what it says is receive and retain 100% of the leases associated with that 2.65 million. That's a correct statement. You're going beyond that into more of the contract that says if they put any new equipment on there, then we get 50% of that.
Actually, it says new revenues in the contract.
That's beyond what we put in here.
We've got a baseline, but yeah, I'd like the auditors to look at that contract and see if what we're looking for is accurate.
Okay, sure.
All right.
Any other questions? Mr. Modri.
Thank you. What year of your contract are you in now with your current contract? Is this the third year or fourth?
This is the fourth. Five years.
I believe it's the fourth of five years of a five-year contract. It might be the third of five years. I don't have that detail with me.
Okay, all right, thank you. So you had a five-year before this, right? Was it, or was it a three?
I believe it was five.
I think it was, and so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cook.
Rich, if I'm understanding you right, the statement made on page 57 and 58 are correct statements in here.
I believe those are correct statements. There's more detail to those contracts.
Right.
But if we filled this up with every contract detail, it'd be significantly longer than 72 pages.
Right, we were, like, what you made, your statement was that any new equipment put on our towers, we would split 50/50 of that.
Yep.
But where it's at today, they collect 100%. If nothing changes, they continue to collect 100%.
Yes.
So these two statements on note 17 and note 16 are accurate statements. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions? The Audit Committee? I don't think so. Mr. Severson, did you have a comment?
Well, maybe I can just highlight a couple of the positive things that went on here during the year. Number one, the city's total assets increased and liabilities decreased, and when this audit is published, what you'll do is you'll see on page three, start something called Management's Discussion and Analysis. That's where we take the, all of the charts and columns of numbers and footnotes that are in accounting jargon, and we try to explain it in words, in a few paragraphs in the front of the report. So when this is out there and published, I encourage you to take a look and just read through the Management's Discussion Analysis, because what it tries to do is boil it down and highlight some of the issues. And so that's why, I just want to repeat a couple of them. The city's total net position increased by 3.6 million. That's something that with the implementation of some of the GASB and stuff, in the past, we went down because we had to implement certain pronouncements that we had to do additional liabilities and put them on the balance sheet. So this year, including all of the GASB statements, we're starting to move back up in our net position, if somebody wants to look at that. It's just a kind of a nice indicator that you can look at, kind of like the stock market index. You know, you can see where you're going. And the city's longer-term debt decreased by 2.5 million. So not only did we increase overall, but we also reduced our debt as much as we could and still make sure that we have plenty of reserves going forward. There's some other things on those pages that I'm not going to go into all the detail. I'll let you read it for yourself, but overall, you know, in addition to, I think, doing a pretty good job of just managing the financial process, and in addition to the city providing for public safety, parks, cemeteries, a library, I mean, now the handicap buses, we also were able to do a couple of nice things, added amenities to American Heroes Park, renovated the Casio and Gilbert pools, overlaid 10 miles of, lane miles of streets, and began the remodeling as of September 30th for the building you're sitting in now that's the new City Hall. So there was some tangible product to come out of this and to still, you know, increase the net position and lower the debt to get ready for some of the things that we're going to have to do. I just thought that was kind of a couple of highlights that maybe should be pointed out. And as far as the audit goes, the auditors, they're tough, they're thorough, and that finding in there that they mentioned, remember, that's for accrual-based financials that we do once a year. I can assure you that the cash-based monthly operating of the city is in good shape. You know, comparing the actuals to the budget and getting everything properly accounted for on a cash basis, your people here are doing a good job.
I'd like to say a few words. Amy and your team, thank you very much. While it's not the nice part and pretty part about business, it's a very important piece. Rich Severson, to your team, Marcy and Scott, great job, as well as to the council that serve on the Audit Committee, thank you for taking the, Mr. Preister and Mr. Cook, so. Mr. Cook, do you have a question?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Preister, do you have a question? Nope.
Just a comment unless you want to.
I was going to make a quick comment before I made a motion, but, oh, go ahead. Okay, I just wanted to thank Rich and his staff. I'm sure there was long days, long nights of trying to get this all prepared, and Amy, the meeting we had, I thought went real well. The mayor also attended the meeting, and Amy and Rich took us through the report. There was a lot of good conversation, a lot of good explanation. I think it went real well. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the 2016-17 Annual Audited Financial Statement. It came back as unmodified, a clean opinion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Preister. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Cook. It was good serving with you and continuing on the Audit Committee. I would just like to say thanks to Amy and Rich, all of the staff that not only worked on the audit, but work on our finances, because it's a big job. You've got $60 million there that you've got to account for, and that's a lot of numbers, and any little one can get thrown off, that can throw things off. So to have this much emphasis, this much work go into it, I commend all of the staff for what they have done. As it was pointed out in the audit, each year there has been improvement. There have been things pointed out that we could improve upon, and the staff have taken those steps and actually done that. And I've had the privilege and the honor of serving on this council to be able to see those improvements. And there is still some to come, and I appreciate that we're going to be doing those as well. Interesting that several of the things that Rich highlighted were ones that I was going to highlight. The one he didn't say was that in that refinancing, we saved almost a half a million dollars of interest in doing so. So I think the public is well-served. I think we're getting good information, we're using it well, and on this audit, we have no findings. The actual words were no instances of non-compliance. So I think the public is well-served. We have added, as it points out to, almost 40 pages of notes and references, so the public can understand what some of these numbers are, what the categories are. That has, as it also points out, increasingly grown because the budget seems more complex and because we have categories, it keeps getting added to, and we have a material weakness. But that material weakness is really just, we don't have enough staff to be able to hire somebody to provide more information for the auditors, so the auditors have to do some of our work. We had one of those people, Mark Sipker, an excellent employee who's no longer here, unfortunately, but we have the choice of having this weakness, as we call it, or we can hire another person. And we may get to that point, but some of us don't want to spend more money just to have more eyes looking at it. So I don't know where we'll go with that, but you're welcome, either or both of you, to comment on my comments. But I see this as an excellent audit of an excellent department in an excellent city, and I think it's a good day in Bellevue.
Thank you for your comments, but could you just change that to significant deficiency? Because the material is very, very bad.
I change it and stand corrected.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Modri.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for hard work with this audit. There is a lot of information there, and I just wish the council would have had a little more time. There are some of us that really like numbers, like to pour through them, so if, had we had a little more time to look through, we may have had some additional, you know, intelligent questions to ask of you all. So I know this has to be passed and approved into the state, you know, by the end of the month statutorily, so we're in that position, but I'd like to try and press for next time to give us a little more time to review it.
I'm sure whoever's here next time will try to get it done earlier.
And there's still time for questions and discussion. They can pick up the phone and call you or stop by, correct? Any other discussion or questions? See none, please vote. Yeah, we had a motion and a second, and we were in discussion.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 9 is ordinances for, excuse me. Ordinances for Adoption, third reading. Item 9A is ordinance number 3889 relative to the City of Bellevue's compliance to state statute. And then item number 9A1 is resolution number 2018-11, adoption of the cemetery rules.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve ordinance number 3889.
Motion.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Burns. Discussion, please. Mr. Shannon.
What we've done here in this ordinance is just copy the state statute into the city ordinance. We've accomplished nothing. If we're going to provide a perpetual care fund for the cemetery, we have to change the word "may" to the word "will," so that we're saying we're going to do something. Otherwise, it's not worth repeating a state statute into a city ordinance. Otherwise, it's not worth repeating a state statute into a city ordinance. So, I would like to see us make this a mandatory thing, where we create a perpetual care fund to take care of the cemetery in perpetuity, where we are following the state restrictions on the funds, where that, those funds are fenced off for capital improvements, for additional land acquisition, for the intended purposes of perpetual care of the cemetery. Sticking it in our statute and saying we may do it, well, we're may, you may or may not do it, and no one's gonna do anything you're not made to. So, if we don't put "will" in here, the ordinance isn't worth having, because all it says is we could do this, but we're probably not going to.
Mr. Buckley.
Uh, just a point of clarity, the ordinance, uh, the state statute says that a city of the first class like, uh, Bellevue, uh, may by ordinance create a perpetual care fund. So, even though I understand what you're saying, it doesn't say that the city shall create the fund, but there has to be an ordinance that will allow for the fund to be created. So, we can't just rely on state statute by creating a, a perpetual care fund for the cemetery. We would have to pass an ordinance that would give that authority.
Mr. Manjumelli.
Yes, continuing with, uh, what Mr. Buckley said, the, uh, uh, an ordinance to create the perpetual fund, uh, could be presented to the city council if that's your wishes, and that could be done as part of the budget development process for two thousand eighteen dash nineteen. So it doesn't, it doesn't have to be considered tonight, it could be considered at a later date.
Any other questions, concerns, discussion? See none? Please vote.
Item nine A one then is resolution number two zero one eight dash eleven, adoption of the cemetery rules.
Mr. Preister.
Mayor, I would move that we open for public hearing on this item.
First, we should have it on the floor, so if I...
You want it on the floor first? Go ahead, then.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to, uh, adopt the number twenty eighteen eleven resolution adopting the cemetery rules.
Second, and move that we open for public hearing on this item.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Preister. I'm waiting for Sabrina to catch up.
Sabrina, is there anything you need to do right now, or can the public testimony be held and then the vote taken?
They have, well, we have to put the motion in to open for public hearing, so...
Can't you do that while the pub, while the public is testifying?
Not if we have to vote first.
We can do a voice vote.
It's coming. It's, it's going now.
There, there is the vote.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
First of all, I would like to thank the members of the, uh, committee that worked on, uh, so diligently on this, uh, and brought back what they have tried. What has seemed to me is that, at the same time that, uh, this committee has worked so hard, there are people in this community who profess to know what they're doing about, uh, cemeteries, that have worked to make this committees like a salmon trying to get upstream to spawn. Uh, item six on page seven says, "The city of Bellevue may establish a charge for transfer of ownership of lots. No transfer of ownership shall be complete or effective until all charges are paid." If these are the rules, what's the charges? They should be written out. Are you gonna charge me, uh, everything I paid in to get out of, out of that cemetery? Or anybody else for that matter? Uh, uh, that's just one. The state, Mr. Buckley, uh, mentioned something about the state law. The state maintains a he, in law that says that this city has a stream of income that can be used exclusively for the cemetery. Yet, we don't, we aren't looking at that. We fight against it. Why? I don't know. Why aren't we trying to make this cemetery the showcase of Nebraska? Why are we trying with, I had written something up that I was going to talk about tonight, perpetual care. What is perpetual care? Is it cutting the grass, pulling a few weeds? Uh, or is it more than that? Is it taking care of the graves in perpetuity? My first wife and my parents are all buried in Ohio. There are no family members left in Ohio to look after their graves. The cemeteries that they reside in are perpetual care cemeteries. Once about every five years, I get to go back, and they take excellent care. Not what I see here. A little bit more money, a little bit more time, and we could make this cemetery into something that's really great. And like I said, there is a revenue stream available. All the city council has to do is tap it. I'm sorry that this has come the way it has. I agree with Mr. Manjumelli that we can bring things up in the future, and maybe next year, when we start working on the, on the budget, we'll do that. But, uh, I am, again, very proud of the men who worked on this committee and what they've turned out. It's the best that they could do under the circumstances. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Did you want to make a comment? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, your first point that the city didn't put the money, the allocation or the dollar amount in the budget, is because we have a separate place where we do that. It's only referenced in, in the rules and the ordinance, it's actually in our fees. So those can vary, and we change our fees periodically. So it is listed, it's just in a different location. I forgot one thing. I want my money back. I'm grandfathered in. You're gonna resell my plots for more than what I paid, so I don't owe you any fees. All right? We, we have a fee schedule, is what I was referring to. You didn't have up until you, this, this is, uh, is, uh, and the old one. We've always had a fee schedule. I never heard of, never saw it, and I have the original rulebook that was under until you, uh, you all decided you needed to change the whole thing. What are the fees? What are the fees? Mr. Wells, we can send you a copy of our fee schedule. Uh, I believe it's online, is it, Rich? Okay, we can send that to you. I'd appreciate it.
Are there others?
Because I really haven't decided yet whether to work with you or to get the heck out. I'd rather work with, with the city, be honest with you. But there seems to be, never mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak on this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing.
I already made it.
We are, we already had the motion and the second.
I just closed the public hearing.
Any questions from the, the council? I'll call the vote. Uh, Mr. Modri, did you have a question?
Uh, just a comment. Uh, like to, I'd like to thank as well the task force that worked on this, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Madison, uh, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Shannon, along with the legal counsel, uh, Mr. Buckley. I think you guys, uh, did a good job trying to come to, you know, common ground and get us something that we can put on the floor here tonight, so thank you very much.
Ditto. Thank you. I call the vote. Please vote. Thank you.
Item ten is ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Item ten A is ordinance number three nine zero two, amending the zoning ordinance regarding household pets.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing.
Item ten B is ordinance number three nine zero three, rezoning Lot Two, Wolf Creek replat seven, from BG to RG two zero PS with site plan approval for the purpose of multifamily residential development. The applicant is Wolf Creek Apartments LLC. General location, South Fifteenth Street, south of Cornhusker Road.
Jim Bouger, one zero two five zero, Regency Circle. I'm an attorney with Panzing Hogan Law Firm. Uh, we represent, our firm represents, or has represented, did represent, Mike Hogan for, uh, years. Danny Hogan, one of my partners, uh, is, Dan, uh, Mike was his uncle. Uh, I worked with Mike for many years on the Wolf Creek Development, uh, which this is a lot that's within that development. I'm sure you're all familiar with the location off of the highway, uh, and, uh, just immediately south of the Walmart store, uh, we have, uh, this project is on nine and a half acres. Uh, we had subdivided a lot, there's four and a half acres that we are selling off for a fitness facility, uh, which, um, is being, will be developed in conjunction with this apartment project. Uh, the particular project is being developed by Quantum Development. Uh, they have a partner, uh, the Selden Companies, uh, we're gonna have representatives from the developer talk tonight about their project specifically. Uh, it's a two hundred and forty, uh, unit market rate apartment. Uh, there's a, a couple of hotels are, uh, immediately adjacent to the, to the parcel. Across the street, you have the Blue Buffalo Facility. Uh, immediately to the north of the Blue Buffalo, you have the Walmart, or I'm sorry, the Wolf Creek Shopping Center, and then various pad sites that, uh, line fifteenth, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Cornhusker. The, uh, site characteristics, so one of the challenges that we had with this site for years, uh, Mike has, uh, Mike tried to sell this for, uh, well, twenty-five years, ever since I started working on the project, and, uh, there's a, actually a sewer line that runs diagonally through the middle of these lots, and every time we had somebody come and kick the tires on the lots, uh, they found out that the sewer lines ran right through the middle of it, and they had a real hard time getting site plans that could work with, uh, the particular, uh, challenges of the site. There's also a big drainage esment that runs across the front of the lot. So we were really excited when we had an apartment developer come in and were able to, uh, lay out their project so that they could put their buildings and then have parking that, uh, runs through the, uh, generally over the, where the sewer lines were located. So it's a really, uh, compatible use for the site, um, and it's the first user that we've, uh, been able to identify that's, uh, been able to successfully negotiate that little trap. So, uh, again, we're, we're, we're happy that they showed up, um, uh, on this site. So the, uh, one of the other, uh, challenges that we've had is, obviously, the commercial development, uh, has slowed down quite a bit. The Wolf Creek Center has some vacancies in it. We sold that property about, uh, six months ago, and, and, uh, with the Gordmans vacancy and a couple of other vacancies in that center, this center's struggling a little bit, and we, we believe that the apartment unit, or the apartment development will help revitalize that area, the Wolf Creek Shopping Center. Um, as you know, if you look at a lot of the, uh, developments that are happening in the greater, uh, Douglas and Sarpy County areas, a lot of the larger developments are these mixed-use type developments where you have a combination of retail, residential, and office uses. I'm, uh, in particular, I'm working on a couple of large developments, the, uh, Boys Town Development at Hundred and Forty-Fourth and Dodge, uh, the Avenue One Project, uh, which is about two hundred acres at Hundred and Ninety-Second and Dodge. I'm also, uh, legal counsel for Canagran, representing them in the redevelopment of their campus, which is also gonna be, uh, a mixed-use development project. Um, it's kind of the wave of the future and what we're seeing in development, uh, where you bring in residential component, uh, and you have built-in uni, users essentially for the retail and office, uh, uses. And so the live, work, play concept has really been, uh, actively pursued by, uh, developers and, uh, well, that's kind of, kind of the way things are trending today. Uh, Scott Brown is gonna take over for me and explain the project. I have a couple of things to add at the end. Um, we're really happy, the Quantum Development folks are, you know, first-class developers in Omaha, have a great reputation, as do the Selden Metonic folks that are gonna talk about and manage the project for, uh, Quantum, and we did get a seven-two vote by Plan Commission. We're thankful for that and their support. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Scott. Thank you.
Okay, Sabrina, how do I get this PowerPoint to kick in?
Where's Phil?
Oops. Thank you. Uh, Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Scott Brown. Uh, I'm a partner with Quantum Real Estate. We were formed in two thousand and one to develop and own commercial real estate. We're very active in the Village Point Shopping Center and have developed and own still many shopping, uh, the strip shopping centers surrounding the Village Point, uh, area, and also we've developed, uh, two strip shopping centers in Papillion at Seventy-Second and Three Seventy. The downturn occurred, we changed our model into apartments, and currently we are in the middle of a project in northwest Omaha at Hundred and Ninety-Second and Maple Street, where we are developing three hundred and eighty-four units. Uh, we'll have a clubhouse, pool, workout facility at this location. Our first project, though, I wanna talk about is Titan Springs. Titan Springs is very similar to the Wolf Creek area. Titan Springs is located at Sixty-S sixth and Highway Three Seventy. I don't have a laser, but, uh, left side, there is Highway Three Seventy, uh, and you can see to the west is a, is a Shadow Lake, uh, shopping center. We purchased this land, about seven acres, in two thousand and six for commercial use. We laid it out for, uh, C Store, Bank, a couple retail shopping centers, strip centers, and office buildings. The downturn occurred, and so we had to go back. Uh, it took us a while to figure out this was not gonna be commercial in our lifetime. Uh, went back and looked at it and said, okay, if we try and take out some of the strip centers and redevelop it, um, we might have a better shot of creating some residential to, uh, support the commercial. Uh, talked to this Papillion in two thousand and thirteen, uh, fourteen, and Papillion was not very supportive, uh, for the past twenty years of apartments. Uh, however, in this situation, uh, they really liked the use and the location. We received their approval in two thousand and fifteen, and so we have an apartment project, Titan Springs, where we started out with eighty units, uh, there was a access point off Sixty-S Sixth Street, um, and we're gonna have a C Store and a Bank next to it. After we started grading, what happened was, uh, traffic. So the Steve, the C Store brings, uh, a thousand to two thousand, three thousand cars... So the C-Store brings a thousand to two thousand, three thousand cars per day. Well, that now created the need for a traffic signal at Highway three seventy where sixty-sixth Street intersects it. And so we talked to the city a little bit, a little bit further, and figured out a way to alleviate that need to downzone. So we took the three thousand cars or two thousand cars per day that a C-Store brings and proposed adding another additional forty-eight units to the project. So this was our revised site plan in two thousand and sixteen. The city was very happy. We took out that sixty-sixth Street entrance. We significantly minimized the traffic now that leaves Titan Springs and goes to three seventy. And the project just completed in December first of two thousand and seventeen. Early on in that project, my partner and I, Rob Llewellyn, noticed, here's what it looks like today. Just some other shots. Interior granite countertops. Very nice apartment. So early on, we noticed, we're looking at the lease, seeing who the tenants were, several of the initial tenants were base employees. So that made us start to think here, maybe there's a need in Bellevue. We drove around and looked at a lot of different sites in Bellevue, trying to find somewhere that's very similar to Titan Springs. We want somewhere where you have shopping nearby. Grocery store is very important. At Titan Springs, we have Hy-Vee six blocks away. Starbucks, Buffalo Wild Wings. You want to have retail that can help apartment people, you know, be nearby. So we're looking at Bellevue, we saw the Wolf Creek site. Saw Walmart, right near this proposed location, Starbucks, Panera, Buffalo Wild Wings. It fit our criteria to a T. We laid it out. As Mr. Buzer said, there's a sewer that runs diagonally through the property. If you look between the two buildings, there's a big, large sewer there, so you have to work around that. Apartments work well in this manner because we can have the apartments on either side of the property lines and put in between their parking with garages. So we laid it out for two seventy-two unit buildings, and then we have two thirty building, two thirty-plex buildings just to the east of the hotel there. We're proposing a seventy-two unit project. It's going to be very nice. It'll meet the requirements the city of Bellevue has as far as materials. We will have an elevator in these two units. The thirty-plex buildings will have half attached garages to them, so that way, half the units will have connected parking. Here's what the thirty-plex looks. We're using a model out of Ankeny in Iowa. It has not been designed yet, but similar to this appearance. Where you see the garages are connected. And the interior is very nice. Wood floors, cabinets, and the bathroom. So with that, I'd like to introduce my partner, Rob Llewellyn, and our other partner, Bob Dean, is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm Rob Llewellyn, nineteen twenty-five North Hundred and Twentieth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Just a quick overview, Scott hit almost everything. The objective is, like he said, is Titan Springs has been a fantastic project for us. We're already eighty-five percent leased there. We do have forty-three base members who do live on-site, so we do have a lot of people coming from Bellevue. The majority of people are coming, are either base, and then we have a lot of medical people that live there. I think there's twenty-five people that work in the medical field there as well. So we're pretty, we feel very blessed that we have that many people coming to that site. And as he said, December one of two thousand and seventeen is when we finished the project. And to be, to have this kind of occupancy at this point, especially, you know, January and February are not exactly the ideal times to be leasing property. We've still had continued interest in people moving in, and we hope to be in the ninety-five percent occupancy range here within the next month or two. From a material perspective, really, he's showing it. We don't want to change anything from the insides. We will add a little bit more storage. You know, we've learned on each project as we do them what the demands are of the people, but we'll probably have a little bit larger closets in a couple of the units. But other than that, we've found the amenities to be key. We'll have a dog park. We'll have a dog wash station. We'll have fabulous amenities from the perspective of a small workout facility, clubhouse, pool, and all those kind of things. One of the things that we, utilizing on this, we use just conventional financing to do Titan Springs, so we use SAC, Federal Credit Union, to do the funding on that project. We are going to use a different funding source on this project. It's through the HUD, FHA. It's regular market rate housing, just the same, but we would use, it just offers a lot more benefits from the perspective, it's longer amortizations, it's just beneficial from our perspective. But it's incredibly painful upfront. It's about an eight-month process to go through, but we want to get across the point that it's, it's still a market rate product that we're going after, you know, same type of rental rates and that we're getting in our Papillion project. Just a side note, I actually live here now. We sold our house, my wife and I, and our kids are off to college and everything like that, so we moved in, and it's been a fabulous experience for us from that perspective. I don't know if it's our long-term goal to always be there, but for right now, for the next year or so, it's a fabulous place. So I can say from experience, I know what it's like in these, and they're quiet, and we have great surroundings and great people around us. But I don't mean to overdo any of this, but if I could present Bob Dean, he's our third partner in this, and I'd like to hit, he can say whatever he'd like, but thank you very much.
Go ahead and sign in if you would to.
Oh, sure.
Please, thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Dean, represent Selden Company. I live in Omaha, one four five two zero, Harvey Oaks Avenue, and also a partner in the project with Scott and Rob. We, so I spend most of my time, I've spent most of my life, working on apartment communities across the Midwest, working for Selden Company, Ted Selden and the families, and we spend time in this market, we spend time in many other markets across the Midwest, from, we go from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, through Beaumont, Texas, actually looking at apartment communities and trying to understand the trends in housing and how people live, how people want to live going into the future, what younger folks are looking for, also what baby boomers and empty nesters are looking for, folks like, like Rob and his wife. And so when, you know, when, we're proud to be the managers of Titan Springs. Our company manages a lot of housing across this, across the city, across the metro area that is similar to Titan Springs. When they said they'd found the, this location, and we talked about, it is a housing opportunity, it seemed like a really obvious choice to me to do that because I see developments very similar to this in markets like Kansas City, markets like Des Moines, markets like San Antonio, Texas, where we do a lot of business at. And so I thought it made an awful lot of sense from that standpoint. The one thing that Rob or Scott didn't mention is that we don't, we don't endeavor into any developments without very carefully studying the market and the demand and the ability for folks that are in that market to, to pay the bills and to pay the rent, maintain the property and take good care of it. And so we got market studies from market analysts that we use, both locally as well as nationally. There's a fellow we use a lot out of New Orleans, Louisiana, named Mark Jackson, who's done a lot of, a local market analyst for a lot of developers in this area. And Mark certainly confirmed that there was, this was a good, good site for apartments. There was high demand in this particular area, and that it would serve, you know, pretty, pretty good cross-section of folks, from folks that, you know, were trying to get back and forth from Bellevue University, or folks that were trying to get to downtown Omaha. I think, I think we measured at one point the distance from, from Titan Springs to downtown Omaha was a shorter drive than it is from my home at one hundred and forty-fourth and Center Street to downtown Omaha. And so I think it's a, it's a good spot to catch a good cross-section of folks, it's a good housing opportunity. It's not the exact mixed use maybe folks might look for, but there certainly is mixed use that's here. And I think it's a terrific location, it'll make a great, a great housing spot for folks. Happy to answer any questions anybody would have.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, it was mentioned that there was a fitness facility that would be in addition. I assume that's on a separate parcel of ground, or is that on the same site? Is it, I don't, it's separate from the housing, I think. Just clarification, please.
Mr. Preister, Jim Bouger, one zero two five zero, Regency Circle. I represent the owner of the property and the adjacent property, which is where the fitness facility will be built. So if you picture the Walmart, there's a four and a half acre lot that's immediately south of the Walmart, and then this, this parcel is an L-shaped piece that fits around the, the two hotels, and it's nine and a half acres. So we subdivided the parcel, the fourteen and a half acres into the five-acre piece and the nine and a half acre piece, the northerly pieces that, fitness, and then, and in fact, it saves them on their clubhouse because they'll have a built-in fitness facility and users.
Makes sense, and it fills out that whole area nicely.
Yeah, and this is about a fifteen million dollar project, so it's a good tax base for Bellevue as well.
Good. Thanks for the clarification.
And then we have a couple of other, we have, there were two issues that were raised by the, by the planning department. We want to address both of those in this meeting. Traffic, and I have some, we have some traffic folks here that can speak to that, and then I'll talk a little bit about the compatible zoning issue.
Mr. Hanson, did you have a question? Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank you, sorry. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come present to you guys on behalf of Wolf Creek Apartments. My name is Adam Denny. Can you get a look closer? Sorry. My name is Adam Denny. I'm with Felsberg Holton Olvig. I reside in Omaha, live at one four nine four nine Dayton Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three seven. With me is Mark Meisinger. Mark is a colleague of mine. He works at FHU as well. Sorry, I'll get this figured out. So FHU is, we are a transportation-focused engineering firm. We do traffic studies like this all over the Midwest, a lot in Omaha, Council Bluffs, as well as Lincoln. The, this traffic study, the, this started, I think we had an initial submit, a draft submit to the city. The project was initially scoped with conversations with planning as well as Public Works over here, with trying to get their concerns upfront, so we were able to accommodate and answer their questions with our study. Their, kind of the main concerns that they had initially were kind of the different land use types that could potentially be in this site. So with the traffic study, we submitted a draft study to planning and Public Works. We received their comments, and that since finalized the traffic study. The limits of the traffic study, as you can see, the blue area highlighted on the screen is where the proposed site plan, the proposed two hundred and four apartment units are proposed to go. The site plan is shown on the right. Access to their site is proposed off of Cornhusker Road on South Fifteenth Street, and there's also two access points using the existing hotel drive, and then also an access point on the west side where the existing Blue Buffalo South Drive is. So those are the access to the site. Some existing conditions, we went out and did traffic counts in October of two thousand and seventeen to get kind of a current base set. Existing peak hours are your typical commuter peak hours to, for the traveling public, seven to eight in the morning, and then five to six in the evening, when you have your traveling public going to and from work. Looking at intersection operations, the top right shows a bunch of letters, what these letters represent are level of service. So it's a letter representation representing the how well or how bad the traffic is operating. So a level of service of A means you have really good traffic operations, you can flow right through the intersection. A level of service E and F mean kind of poor level services where you have to wait a couple of cycles to get through the intersection, there'll be longer queues. So looking at the current traffic conditions, you can see it's a D and E at fifty in the Cornhusker today. Typically, the city of Omaha likes to use level of service D as the acceptable traffic operations goal for projects. So level of service D in the AM, level of service D in the PM, under existing traffic conditions. You could also see the other two intersections were those two other access points that I mentioned. So those are the two other intersections we looked at. We looked at things like, do they need left turn lanes into there on South Fifteenth Street was one of the big issues. And so the first step in the traffic study is to do kind of this trip generation, and trip generations are based on the land use and what's on your site, how much traffic will that generate? So we use some industry standards to basically develop an estimated number of trips that we could expect from a site. So a site with two hundred and four apartments, the top row of the graph there shows would be expected to generate just over fifteen hundred trips during the day. As part of the study, we also took a look at how, what, how would it operate, or what type of trips could be expected if there was a commercial land use on this site? So we made some general assumptions, included like a strip mall as well as a couple restaurants in our, in our assumptions for the commercial land uses for the site. And with those assumptions, the daily trips was just under six thousand, so almost an increase of three hundred percent, three percent increase in trips would be expected if a commercial land use was put on this site opposed to a residential land use. So the apartments are lower, generating land use to put on a site. You start putting again like gas stations or strip malls or restaurants, those are your more higher generators, and you'll see a lot more trips attracted to those sites. So with that, then, what we do is we'll take those site-generated trips, we'll then kind of expand that throughout the roadway network to try to see to and where trips are coming from to the site. We use background traffic, our existing counts, as well as kind of some local area knowledge to, to kind of develop these trip distribution percentages. So the site traffic is then rerouted through the network to and from the site. So we're able to kind of get a side-by-side comparison here of the, if it was a residential land use, so two hundred and four apartments, what would we be able, what would we expect to add traffic to the existing network? And then if it was a commercial land use, what number of trips would be expected to add? So just kind of, for example, just a comparison, so the eastbound right on Cornhusker Road, say if there was a residential land use, two hundred and four apartment units, you could anticipate or expect eleven additional trips making that right turn in the morning and thirty-six in the PM. If it was a commercial land use, that number is significantly higher, which would go to ninety-six additional trips in the AM, and then a hundred and twenty-two trips in the PM. That's just, kind of compare apples to apples there with the movements, and you kind of see that similar increase on all their movements at the intersection. So now Mark's going to talk a little bit about kind of the future traffic and...
Thanks. Again, Mark Meisinger, Felsberg Holton Olvig, one one four two two Miracle Hill Drive in Omaha. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak to you again. I know I was here the last council meeting, so thank you very much. As Adam mentioned, you know, we've gone through and done a lot of background on the existing traffic additions. Then we take our trip generation and apply that to come up with this two thousand and twenty-two build, which is the projected year that the apartment complex would be complete. I'd like to draw your attention to the items we have circled in the red. That is the northbound movement out of the development area. It might be kind of hard to see on the monitor, but the northbound left with the residential would be expected to be level of service D in both the AM and the PM. With the commercial use, we would expect that to be level of service D and level of service F in the PM. That is with the existing lane configuration, which is a dual northbound left. We wouldn't expect really to, to add a lot of, you know, a triple left or anything like that at this intersection. And again, that's with optimization of the signal. This is a comparison of the residential versus commercial level of service. That's just another way to look at, it's what we had on the previous figure. Wanted to draw your attention to the items that are highlighted here. So again, that northbound left turn, as you can see on the left with the residential, we'd expect level of service D operations. With commercial, that's an F, and that, the numbers there are the numbers of seconds of delay per vehicle. So as you can see, it's, it's... So as you can see, it's, it's almost eighty, eighty-one seconds per vehicle of delay that would be expected for each driver that comes through that movement. The other movement would be the westbound left. Again, that's, they're both level of service D, but you can see with the commercial use, D and fifty-five, that is right on the borderline between D and E. And as Adam mentioned, you know, city of Bellevue, NDOT and a lot of the local jurisdictions, the target is level of service D. If we're anything above that, they start to question and want to do some capacity improvements. And again, another thing that we look at is queuing, so the number of vehicles or the length of, you know, vehicles that are stacked at a particular intersection. And you just wanted to draw your attention to the items that are highlighted here. Eastbound right turn would be expected with the residential be a hundred and forty-four feet, commercials two hundred and seventy feet. The northbound left, again, two hundred and nineteen feet with residential and over three hundred with commercial. And then the westbound left would be a hundred and eighty-two feet of storage with the residential and almost three hundred with the commercial. That movement exceeds the existing turn-based storage length for that location. So just in summary, we'd like to point out that the, there's, you know, minimal impacts to the roadway with the residential land use compared to the commercial. There's about three hundred percent more trips with the commercial use at this site. As we mentioned, there's shorter queues and better levels of service with the residential. And with these apartments, you know, we, we could achieve acceptable traffic operations. So Adam and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm by no means a traffic expert. My issue is not so much the Fifteenth and the intersection there with all the lights. My, my issue is really Willow Springs. That's kind of my area, my ward, and I've heard from several of the folks that have been complaining for a long time, regardless of the apartments, about the trucks that come in from Twenty-Fifth Street and go to Blue Buffalo. There's signs, there's no trucks going to the west, but not that way. That area at Fifteenth has all kinds of stop signs and lights and whatever. On Hogentown, there's nothing but some speed bumps and stop signs. I mean, if I'm going to go, say, go work at the Bellevue Medical Center or the base, I would just slip out of that way if I was there and go right, right through Hogentown, get on Twenty-Fifth Street and go that way. And I worry about that neighborhood with school buses, and I know that it's been a concern because looking at the planning commission, I can see that they were concerned about Willow Springs and also the police department was a little concerned too. They've had a lot of complaints and a lot of visits, so they've been over there in the Willow Springs with that area. So that's my main concern, isn't so much the, I know there's a market for it, believe me, there is a market for the rental market here. I'm just concerned about two hundred and four units being right there, right, so they can go right through Willow Springs. If there was another exit in and out of that way, but that's my concern, so.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you. I have that concern as well as the Fifteenth and Cornhusker. I live in Avery Hills area, so I come out on Fifteenth, you know, every morning to make a left turn onto Cornhusker. And occasionally want to go straight to go to Walmart. Traffic coming through from Walmart, making a left turn westbound onto Cornhusker, there's five, six, seven, eight cars streaming through that left turn after I've got a green to go forward. So I don't know if there's a traffic timing issue there, but it's pretty consistent. Lot of, lot of cars streaming through. If there's ever any, well, and then the intersections with the stoplight for the J.F. Kennedy and then the stoplight at Southern Bank now, you get some pretty good queues building up. If there's an accident, bad weather, you know, I'm stuck there trying to get out while the people are blocking the intersection with the queues. So something would have to be optimized there. I, I understand commercial would probably make it even worse, but we have a situation there now. That's my concern.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the question coming up. It's partially directed at you, but I, I would ask our public works director, Jeff Roberts, and put him on the spot for a change. The, the whole issue of traffic in there, this project is going to impact, but it's been a problem. We've all heard the problem. It's from the neighbors on both sides of Cornhusker. It's just an area with the Kennedy going through, which we wanted. We have created a very difficult traffic flow situation that's not easy to remediate. I was glad to see that Dean Dunn, our engineer, put in this report that there's a look at traffic studies to assess that area, but it's off in the future. There wasn't a date, there wasn't anything. So my question to you, what can we do to get a comprehensive study for traffic in that whole surrounding area so that we could begin perhaps in the next budget or sometime soon, appropriate the money to do whatever is possible to be done? But the first step is having a good assessment of the area and what can be done, or maybe you've got some of that.
Well, the last really comprehensive study we've done was about ten, eleven years ago. And since then, we've, you know, we get complaints and things, so we'll go out and we'll tweak things here and there. Try to optimize them the best we can. But we're at a position now that we're going to have to go global with it again and we're going to have to include all the way up to Twenty-Fifth Street.
Right.
Probably go as far east as Galvin Road, pick up Fort Crook. And so if you remember a couple of years ago in strategic planning, one of the things we were going to look at was widening Cornhusker to six lanes. And I think we're probably going to have to, in fact, I have a proposal on my desk right now from a consultant to do that. It's just not in this year's budget, so I've been holding off on it. But we're probably going to have to move forward with this next year. We probably need to do a global traffic study or actually create a new model for it so that we can re-time all the signals again, which would include, you know, whatever kind of development is approved for down in that area. So as far as sooner or later, yeah, I think sooner we probably better get somebody on board to look at it.
And it's kind of a heads up to us as we put the next budget together, since you say it's not in the budget. It seems pretty important for that area.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
Mr. Preister, if I could, I know that at this interchange, Department of Transportation times the interchange. And so with the close spacing of Fifteenth to the interchange, you're right, there, there should be some optimization between those. I think they have a time-based offset now, which just means, kind of getting technical here, but they can time the signal based on how far away it is. It's kind of a easy way to do it, but there might be a need for some additional communication between those signals. And that could be, you know, the outcome of a study like that. As we mentioned in our, in our study, our results are presuming that there's some optimization at this Fifteenth and Cornhusker. Without that, the operations would be worse than what we highlighted here today. So you're right, there's probably a need to look at some additional study here.
Thank you.
Mr. Shannon.
Thank you. I want to commend you guys for, all of you that presented, for coming up with a project after twenty-five years that actually makes use of this lot. So, yeah, congratulations, getting around the obstacles and everything else. That is, that is an incredible feat. And finally, after twenty-five years, we're going to have a, you know, a viable, productive use of that. So I'm, I'm excited about that. We have definite traffic issues. They're not related to this project, though. No matter what came in there, we were going to have traffic issues. In the last six months, the Bellevue leader has run a story on proposals to fix this very area. There was, yeah, there was a very simple fix to take Fifteenth Street and run it along the, the concrete plan along the east side of the Kennedy Freeway there and connect to Highway three seventy. That way we can get the Blue Buffalo trucks out that way and up onto the Kennedy there and take them out of this and alleviate some of the traffic problems up at Fifteenth and Cornhusker. So there are some simple things that could be done. I'm not into spending another couple hundred thousand on another study when this has been a problem for six or eight years that we've all known about. We promised the neighborhood Willow Springs years ago that we would fix this. All they got out of it were promises and speed bumps. And here we are, six or eight years later, and we're saying, yep, it's a problem, let's go study it some more. No, let's start fixing it. It's not even in the six-year plan, it wasn't addressed in the six-year plan that we just addressed. We need to quit kicking the can down the road and actually fix it. But as far as this project goes, it's, it's not an impact. I mean, everything that develops in Bellevue is going to impact that intersection. And so we don't need to hold these folks up over that, we just need to quit kicking cans around and actually fix something.
Are there any other questions from the council? I'll open for public hearing now at this time, so anyone else, go ahead.
I believe Mr. Bouger has, has some things about zoning.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, just, just one final point. Mr. Chuchak, the planning department, had also provided a comment and really was one of the basis for their denial of the application was the use, the Blue Buffalo uses a heavy industrial zoning, which is across the street, across Fifteenth Street. And I know Mr. Shannon was at the public hearing with the, with the planning commission and Mr. Ackley of the planning commission ran through a great presentation to show that if you go on the other side of the Blue Buffalo, on the east side of the Blue Buffalo, you have residential housing and residential zoning. If you go immediately to the south of this site, you have heavy industrial zoning and you have the Willow Springs development, it's zone heavy industrial right across the railroad tracks from there. And then if you go up and down Fort Crook Road, there are many instances where you have residential, either apartments or single-family that are adjacent to either heavy industrial or light industrial zoning. So it's an existing condition, it's, it's, I guess it's one of the things that, that, you know, is, has, the way Bellevue's developed and, and it just happens that you have this pocket. And in, in fact, when this area was initially developed, it was thought it was going to all be industrial. And then Walmart came along and, and here you go, it was an opportunity. And so the commercial zoning was developed alongside the Caterpillar site and it ended up being a very great benefit for the city of Bellevue. So again, we appreciate your support of this project. And I know that the developer contacted Mary Hawkins and she's written a nice letter of support for us from Bellevue University, they're looking for housing. We met with them on a few occasions and, and we're happy to have their support of our project as well, so thank you.
Are there any other questions? The developer, see none. Now open for public hearing on this item.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Welch. I am the candidate for the Bellevue Council, City Council Ward Four. Want to talk about this proposal. I think it's a great opportunity. As a local realtor, we love the opportunity to add additional housing, to bring people in to be able to work, live and play in this area. And I know that Fifteenth and Cornhusker is kind of a nightmare when it comes to the intersection. We also need to add to the study the amount of young drivers that we have coming out of the high school, which is not going to be that five to six timeframe, that needs to be considered. And the opportunity for the additional commercial development that could happen in that area, whether it's filling up the Wolf Creek area. Mr. Roberts, that, that study that you talked about of taking it from Twenty-sixth Thirty-sixth to Galvin Road to do that traffic study, what's the ballpark of that would cost?
Well, we got some experts here that could probably tell us, but I'm guessing we're probably around, probably under twenty thousand dollars to do the complete. It's not really a study, it's creating a model so that we can optimize all these signals. Not just a study to tell you what we can do, but it'll, it'll give us direction on what to do.
And I think if we haven't done one in ten years, that might be an opportunity to spend that money to get that information because if you can get those lights set up, then you could get that traffic going so much better. I also know that with regards to the police and the fire department, if there's a wreck there, if there's somebody needs to be pulled over, it's, it's just a nightmare. But, you know, it's part of what we have to do to help out with our economic development. One question I did have for the developers is, do you have any idea what the average rents are going to be on those apartments?
Scott Brown, Quantum Real Estate. Rents will be generally at the market or maybe even a little bit higher.
Okay.
When you have an elevator, usually people pay a little bit more for that amenity. And so right now, we're, we don't, we don't have exact numbers, but we'll be.
Well, just a ballpark as to what do you think? Okay, so nine hundred to eleven hundred, that's at this market now, what you're saying? I mean, as the market goes up, they could go up or the demand or the supply or those types of things. Because I think that's also going to help with the spending that happens around that area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dwight Beaton, I live at forty-three oh nine Amos Gates Drive over in Coyle Creek. So I guess you could say I don't have a dog in the fight, but I came down to see your beautiful chambers this evening. And in listening to this, I just have to ask you guys in two weeks to please, please look at this closely. You have been asked to believe that two to three hundred apartments are only going to increase people leaving their ninety-six cars during rush hour. Where are these people who are going to pay eleven hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month in rent going to be working? Are they work from home or are they stay at home? Most of those people are not going to go out that Fifteenth Street intersection, they're going to go out through Willow Springs. I can tell you right now, when I go down to the restaurant down there by Walmart or any of those other places, I don't even, I mean, if you, if you've ever sat there and looked at the vehicles that are coming in off of Cornhusker down that street and either going down to Walmart or further and try to get out and go the other way, you're better off, and I hate to say this because I mean, it's not fair to Willow Springs people, but I end up going through their neighborhood to head back home. That, to take a traffic study and say that the housing is going to generate X because you know how many houses you have, you know how many apartments you're building. And then just pick a pie in the sky commercial, what type of commercial are we talking about there? Just the average commercial, are we talking about a heavy commercial thing? A convenience store or a gas station was mentioned? A gas station won't go in there, there's already a gas station on the corner, just a little ways up. So, I mean, you have to look at that, the, trust your professionals in the planning department, the planning director and the planning department recommended against this, against changing the zoning. The planning commission decided to because it was a reflection of, well, it's better than nothing, there's nothing there now. Something will come and it will be suitable for that, but don't do that to those people that are back in Willow Springs that are going to have increased traffic through there. I also want to remind you that the same council of six, when you're, when you're thinking about this, you are the same six who said that Blue Buffalo, you granted them a sidewalk waiver. So the same two to three hundred people or apartments that people are living in that are going to be walking down to the fine amenities that the gentleman mentioned tonight as far as the coffee place and the this and the that, are not going to have sidewalks. Remember, remember that whenever we were talking about jumping trains and we were worried about having a sidewalk where the trucks would be for Blue Buffalo when they were pulling out? You guys erased the sidewalk need, now there's, that's going to be. But we're adding traffic to an intersection that's already horrendous. And I can tell you, I, I'm almost sure if you talk to any of the officers, they're going to tell you that Fifteenth and Cornhusker intersection is horrendous. It's not these people's fault that it is, but all you're doing is making something that is a E or a D or an E into an E or an F. And to say that's acceptable, we already gave up one of our prime intersections up on Thirty-Sixth and Cornhusker for apartments. I'm not against apartments, but there's a place for them. And obviously there was zoning established here for this to be commercial slash industrial, whatever the case be. And to say that some, that anything commercial is going to create a three hundred percent more traffic through there. You know, I mean, it might be a, it might end up being something like a, another motel or hotel. I don't believe those probably do. You've got some people who come and go, but they're coming and going at different times of the day. You know, it's different, different seasons, those type of things. But what we're putting in there is three hundred or two hundred and some apartments that are going to have people leaving to pay the. people leaving to pay that 1,100 to 1,200 a month rent. And I mean, I am not running for council, like Ms. Welch is. And I'm also a previous realtor. So, I can tell you that, you know, I'm not against development in Bellevue. I know what'll happen if you guys turn this down, is you guys will be painted as, oh, Bellevue's not open for development. But think long and hard about it, because that's an awful lot of people to compress into that area down there. And, you know, yeah, it's got a sewer lane running across the site, but there's other things that could go in there. I mean, soft storage, there's a lot of stuff. There's just a lot of stuff that I think would meet that same guidelines. It's just getting the right person in there that maybe they're asking too much for the property, and they found someone that'll pay a certain amount for the property, because they can compress all these people into that area and get those monthly rents. But think long and hard about it in the next two weeks. I know it's gonna be tough, because you turn it down, then you're painted as against development. But ask yourself, would you wanna be, would you wanna love one who's over in Willow Springs, trying to make it to Bellevue East School or Bellevue West School? And the traffic study said eight to nine, or seven to eight, or whatever. I mean, you gotta look at when those kids are going. I mean, you got kids driving to school, and you got kids leaving at three to four in the afternoon. And I don't ever find that in that area over there, ever, where you can just fly through it and just go through it smoothly. I mean, it always has holdups, and everybody knows that. Thank you.
Steve Dawes, 413 Mary Mall recoup's Memorial Drive. And now that I've given my address, I've probably used up all my time. It's a great-looking project, but it's an east-west corridor. It's a traffic problem. I mean, last summer, we had one lane in each direction, because the deck was getting worked on. If you've looked at what Mother Nature did to the deck problem again, we're gonna have to work on it again. The school's been mentioned. Well, sure, they can go to the east and get out by the car dealers, but if there's a train going by, they're stuck over there, too. It's a nightmare. It's an east-west corridor. It needs to be six lanes, three in each direction. And I am against any development until we get that three lanes in each direction. We've made a promise to a developer when we sold the property for Core Lab that we would let them develop that property. We've got the bank going in. We have a chicken restaurant going in down below. It's supposed to be apartments going in. That's added traffic. The traffic study that was done last year didn't include for the new construction that's going on over by the UPS store. That's more added traffic that wasn't considered in there. I'm not against the project. I'm against the traffic. All I'm asking is that we, please, please, consider the restaurant tax, whatever it takes to make this thing, so that it's six lanes. And if we get the six lanes in, I'm all for this project, and I'm all for putting in the Core Lab apartments and everything else. It's a wonderful idea. But for the average resident that lives in Bellevue or works in Bellevue, you have to get through that corridor. The interstate's... If you want to bypass that traffic, well, you're looking at Chandler. Well, then, again, you're looking at, well, is there a train in the way? Last year, when we had construction or the deck problem over the interstate, at the same time, we had 370 tied up. So, you had to go farther. You had to go to K Part if you wanted to get around all of this. It gets to be to the point where you can't get here from there in Bellevue. Or the detour that you take is longer than sitting in traffic for the 20 minutes that it takes to go east and west during the high-traffic times. But I am not against the project at all. I'm... I open arms for the project and any other project that we want to put in there. But let's get that street in there. And I want to thank the Bellevue leader for mentioning that six beautiful lanes of traffic we could have last year in print. But no, I sound like a broken record, and I don't mean to. But it's a beautiful project, but we can't support it until we get the infrastructure in place to support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there others that would like to speak on this item? See none, and I'll close the public hearing. The third reading for both 10A and 10B will be on April the 19th.
Item 12 is public hearing on ordinances, excuse me, on matters other than ordinances. Item 12A and 12B were show cause hearings for condemnations of two structures. Council has previously continued those to the next council meeting. So, we'll move into current business. Item 14A is approval of an agreement for engineering services between the city of Bellevue and HDR Engineering, Inc., for the Quail Creek Basin Capacity Evaluation Project, not to exceed $10,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 14B is approval to purchase all-in-one computers from Dell in the amount of $42,903.19, replacing 23 city department and eight library lab computers.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve 14B.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Shannon?
Mr. Modri, did you get your questions answered on this? I saw some emails.
Yes, I did. There's a difference in price between the 23 and the eight. The eight have a little less configuration.
And you felt it was reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? See none, please vote. Oh, we don't have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Second by Mr. Burns. Please vote. I know we need a break.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 14C is approval to purchase a new medic unit from North Central Emergency Vehicles in the amount of $219,534. A MX PROR3 stretcher and stair Pro Model 6852 from Stryker for, oh, plus that, for $10,000, $16.42, and three inspection trips totaling $2,000 for a grand total purchase price of $231,550.42.
Mr. Shannon?
Mayor, I'd move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion, Mr. Modri?
Thank you. Yeah, Steve, are you the guy that... Asking this one? Or Rich? I don't know. We, I guess you put out two, or you requested two bids, and you only received one?
That is correct. The two units we have in service now are, the brands are Exlonz and Braun, and only the Braun went back. And then we also advertised it in the paper. I think we're changing the chassis to a smaller chassis on that. And I think those are the manufacturers that are probably doing it the best right now. They're usually Mer... We got off the heavy truck chassis and are going back to the commercial chassis of the board.
Right. I know we need to replace, you know, the old one we have with a lot of miles in that. I don't know how critical it is. Would there be an opportunity to maybe see if we can get more bids in, or?
I don't know who else would bid. And I'll just say, from experience of doing that, typically, the units that we're using are either using Exlonz or Braun, and Exlonz chose not to bid this time, and I can't tell you why.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Shannon?
Are we trading in our old units?
It will, yes. The one that we've talked to, you've seen Todd arrows from the fleet maintenance, yes. We'll be taking the one that's costing us basically an arm and a leg out of service. And however the city wants to dispose it through the auction, or however the proper way they want to dispose it, we'll be fine with us.
Okay. Are we still double dispatching our ambulances? I mean, because it seems to me that we're putting a lot of miles on these things unnecessarily if every call is double dispatched still.
I don't understand the double dispatch. I'll answer that. We prioritize all of our calls. Those calls are prioritized through a system called Pro QA that 911 uses, that's used across the country. So, they have determinants in the questionnaires that the 911 operators ask the people calling in. And the priority is determined by the responses from the people calling in.
Great. Now, try answering the question.
I believe I did.
I believe you didn't. Are we double dispatching our ambulance trips? Are we sending two ambulances from two different fire stations on every call?
No, we've never done that.
Okay. Are we still chasing Omaha's calls up into Omaha for them to back them up?
We have a mutual aid agreement, with an automatic mutual aid agreement with them, yes.
And 90% of those calls are canceled before we get on site?
That's Omaha's determine... That's what Omaha wants to do. They can do that.
And Papillion wised up years ago and told Omaha to pound sand and quit wasting their money and their resources.
That's not how that went down, no.
They're no longer backing them up.
I agree, but that's not how that went down.
But we're still wasting our money, our resources, and putting money on our...
And when we have a fire, and we have a fire, we have limited resources, and we heavily depend on Omaha and Papillion to fill in. So, it's a give and take.
I'd like to see some reductions in unnecessary miles put on the ambulances, because we're wearing our equipment out really fast.
With all due respect, I don't think there's any unnecessary miles being put on those. You're talking about people who may or may not have a life-threatening call that's based off of the information that the 911 operators get. They dispatch to make sure that immediate lifesaving measures can be taken. If you want to take that away, that's up to you.
Are there any other questions for the agenda item? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 14D is approval of the agreement with the Greater Bellevue Area Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Consulting Services in the amount of $12,000 per year.
I move to approve item 14D.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
I already did it once.
You did it twice?
Yeah.
I did it twice.
Mr. Preister's questioning if his vote counted twice?
Yeah. All voted yes.
All voted yes. Thank you. Mr. Preister?
Mayor, on this, since we're just about to leave it, but I think the consulting agreement is well-laid out in terms of all of the deliverables. And I would just, when the chamber brings us back the reports, if they could just fill in next to all of those listed items, we know they're meeting all those requirements. It would make it so much easier for them and for us to read them. So, it, just a matter of how it's done. They're gonna report back at least quarterly, and this is a great way to do it. I really applaud how it's very clear and very specific. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
You might want to provide some balance in this agreement before you guys sign it, because right now, it requires the chamber to bill you monthly, and you're gonna pay them quarterly. So, if you want to pay one invoice for every, or pay once for every three invoices you get, this works. But we probably could allow them to bill us quarterly if we're just gonna pay them quarterly.
Mr. Severson?
Joe, you can correct me, but I thought we changed it to be quarterly in the contract, and...
The payment, yes. The billing is still requiring them to submit 12 bills.
They're gonna submit quarterly also. So, it matches up with the report they give, and then, yep, we're satisfied, we're gonna pay for the services quarterly.
Okay. I thought some balance would be good, so if that's fixed.
At one time, it was monthly, but I thought that's too much, too much work for both parties when the intent is to get through the whole...
What's in our packet still says monthly, so you might want to look for that before you guys sign it.
Will do.
I will check that before I sign it. Thank you, Mr. Severson. There are no other questions. Move on to item E.
Item 14E is the approval of the agreement with Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation for Economic Development Consultation Services in the amount of $15,000 per year.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement with Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation for Economic Development Consultation Services in the amount of $15,000 per year.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 14F is approval of an agreement with WatchGuard Video to purchase nine in-car 4RE video camera systems with body cameras in the amount of $60,149.62. WatchGuard is a sole provider, sole source provider of this equipment, and it matches existing equipment in use in the department.
Mayor, I'd move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion? Mr. Preister, did you have a question?
No.
Mr. Shannon?
Just a comment. I questioned the invoice amount on this one today, because we were presented in our packet an invoice that adds up to $60,149. And then it shows two $3,000 discounts, which, after subtracting 3,000 twice from 160,000, we're back to 160,000. And so, we received a new invoice this afternoon from the manufacturer, and he's showing that the discounts are being subtracted up above, not down below. So, the price is still 160,000, but now the math makes sense.
60,000.
60,000. All right, whatever. I don't work in numbers that small all day, sorry. Yep, 60,149 is correct, and the invoice now reflects that.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 15, Administration Report. Are there any questions for Mr. Mendemelli? Mr. Preister?
Just a comment that if you... It's helpful to see all this information, but if you look at the mayor's list of things, I don't think people appreciate how much time, how many activities, how many ribbons to cut, how many times away from work, how much is involved in the job of being the mayor or the city council. I think both positions are underpaid, underappreciated, and the mayor's highlighted in each of the administrative reports just graphically demonstrates the commitment, the level of dedication to the city, and the heart and love for the city of Bellevue. And it has, I think, been a tradition of mayors in Bellevue, that people care a lot, care deeply, and give a lot. Whether it's fair to them to be undercompensated is another story. But I certainly thank the mayor for all this dedication, and I, for one, appreciate her service to the city and the council's service as well.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions on the item on the agenda? See none, we'll move on to item number 15, Public Request to Be Heard. See none, we'll move on to item number fifteen, public request to be heard, any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number Thirty-Five, Regarding the Principles of Condonation and Decorum, which states, any statements made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual is so attacked as an elected official, city official employee, or a member of the general public, in City Code Section Two-Dash-Six-Eight, regarding the manners of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted on the council chambers, please, speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes. Are there anyone who would like to speak at this time? I read all of that, someone. I see none, we'll move on to adjournment. Mr. Cook.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion in a second, please vote. Oh, motion, Jim Mudry, Mr. Mudry, please. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote for adjournment.
Did I forget to put a motion there? Sorry. My bad, sorry. 'Cause I forgot to put a motion in there. That's why.
All voted yes. You are released.
Our next meeting will be April the nineteenth, in the meantime, ninth, Happy Easter.